Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the annual town meeting, May 9, 2022. I'm Eugene Cushman, town meeting moderator. If we could all stand, please, to pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Town Clerk, if you could please read the call.
Town of East Lime, notice of annual town meeting. Notice hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 9, 2022, at the East Lime High School Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. to act on the following. One, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, as recommended by the Board of Finance. A, in accordance with Chapter 7.3 of the Town Charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machines. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May 19, 2022, at the East Lime Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Two, to adopt a five-year capital plan. Three, to conduct such other business as may properly come before the meeting. This was dated at East Lime, Connecticut, the 29th day of April, 2022. It was advertised in the day paper, recorded in the town clerk's office, and posted on the signpost.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. As usual, we'll go over the ground rules for a town meeting. Under Connecticut General Statute 7-6, you must be an elector of the town, 18 years of age, and a U.S. citizen, and own taxable property on the grand list of 10, 121, and at least the amount of $1,000 or more. Under Connecticut General Statute 9-360, any person who votes in this meeting but is not eligible to vote may be subject to a fine of not less than $300, no more than $500, imprisonment for not less than one year, no more than two years, disenfranchised, or all of the above. I appoint the registrar, so tell her and checkers if we need them. And if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone right here to speak. Give your name and address for the record. The budget, as the town clerk has just mentioned, has been referred to a referendum on May 19, so we will not have a vote on the budget tonight. But we will have a vote on Item 2, which is the adoption of the five-year plan. So I will open discussion on the budget. My understanding is, Ms. Hall, you're going to speak first on the budget.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. As Chair of the Board of Finance, I want to take you through some of the highlights of the budget. A couple of weeks ago, we had the public hearing where we presented the budget in quite a bit of detail, so I'm tonight trying to hit more of the highlights of it. So, oh, that's right. So one of our main goals has been to maintain an undesignated fund balance equal to 15% of the budget. 15% is a percentage that is used by rating agencies to determine our ability to withstand any financial difficulties. It is our savings account, so to speak. The town has made great strides to achieve this 15%, which has been achieved this year. So they've done great work over the last couple of years to get there. We also want to focus on our pension liabilities. This is a subject that has received a whole lot of attention over the last few years. We are very, very lucky to be, actually, I'm misspeaking. We're not lucky, we were fortunate that we had some wonderful people on a pension committee for the last 10 years, a committee that had been established by previous First Selectmen, Paul Formica. And they've done great work, and it is fully funded. So we're one of the few towns in Connecticut that has a fully funded pension. But for those of you who watch the news, the markets don't always go straight up, so we need to always be diligent to make sure that the promises we made to our retirees, we can fulfill them. So we are fully funded, and we hope to stay that way. Our hope is, by taking these prudent budgetary actions, that the rating agencies will hopefully upgrade our debt in the next time we go to market, which typically is in August. So the rating agencies, when we go through the process of issuing debt, they go through all of our finances and look at some of these key factors, and then they will decide whether or not to raise our rating, our credit ratings. Typically, it's very, very difficult to get an upgrade. They're very quick to downgrade. So while we're hopeful, it's not an automatic just because we've achieved this 15% unfunded designated balance. So those are some of the things that we work towards. So with any budget, you're going to have revenues and expenses that we're trying to forecast and balance. So this slide basically captures the major revenue categories and how they compared to the previous year's budget. The finance department attempts to be very conservative in their estimations as we don't want to be in the position of needing to dip into that savings fund balance. On the other hand, if the fund balance exceeds 15% by any significant amount, then you could argue that we were taxing our residents too much. So as you can see, on a percentage basis, the biggest change from previous years is in the undesignated fund balance. The largest contributing revenue factor on an absolute dollar basis is current year taxes, with the total revenue budgets at a 3.39% increase. The undesignated fund balance grew throughout the year, and in this year's budget, we are utilizing 1.3 million, which will still leave the fund balance at 15%. Contributing factors in the growth on this slide are mainly related to tax collection. Both current and previous years and the interest due related to past due taxes. And by the way, we are using a 98.2% to forecast tax collections. Cost sharing, the education cost sharing grant was also larger. And conveyance taxes, which we collect when properties are sold, were significantly higher, with some large properties changing hands. So some of the major areas of projected revenue changes are on this slide. So I'm not going to just repeat all of the numbers, but you can see how this compares to previous years with a total revenue increase of the $1,270,627. Slide 6 has some of the major areas of projected expense changes. Again, I won't get into a whole lot of detail because Mr. Oops, I did, thank you. So I won't get into a lot of detail about this because these are some of the things that Mr. Siri will address in his slide, but these are the areas of expense categories that changed from previous years. So this next slide shows the total budget compared to prior years. So all in all, the general government budget increases $839,000. The debt service decreased $47,000. The education budget increases $1.9 million. And the capital outlay and equipment decreases $46,000. So all in all, the total budget increased by $2.6 million. The Town of East Lime's proposed budget has an overall increase of 3.39%, or this $2.6 million, with an estimated mill rate of 23.84, as submitted tonight pending the budget referendum. Utilizing the undesignated fund balance in excess of the 15% of budget target will help to mitigate tax increases for residents. So this slide is updated from the one that we presented during the public hearing to show the 23.84 mill rate. Now, for those of you who weren't here for that discussion, it's a little bit tricky when you have a revale. So as you probably know, every five years, the state is mandated to do a revaluation of all properties. Now, many of you have noticed what's been going on with the demand for real estate in the area as COVID hit, and everybody could work from home, and they were looking for bigger spaces. They looked to do all sorts of improvements to their home, and all of that has contributed to an average 24% increase in the property value of single-family homes. So what you didn't want to do is take that assessment that you received from the town in January with the new property value and try to take the previous mill rate to determine what your taxes are. It's very important that you don't do that. What happens as the property values increase, if there is absolutely no change in the budget at all, the mill rate would just come down proportionally. The other thing that's a little bit different with how the grand list revale works is everything doesn't move exactly in sync. So single-family homes may have increased 24%. Multi-home may not have increased by that amount. Commercial property didn't increase as much. So there is a little bit of a shift from commercial properties over to single-family homes. And again, 24% is just an average. You could have a home that went up 50%. You could have a home that went up 2%. So 24% is just an average. Now, you can go online to the town's website in case you, you know, threw away that piece of paper, or you don't remember where you put it, or if it, you know, didn't end up there. Right on the website, you can go to the Vision and click on your street and your home number, and it'll tell you exactly where your assessment went. For purposes of illustration, we looked at a home assessed at $250,000, which previously, last year, would have paid $7,128 in taxes. If you increased that value by that average 24%, that would bring it up to a value of $310,000. With this proposed mill rate of 23.84, the tax increase would be $263 a year, or $22 a month. If you had a home assessed at $350,000 and paid $9,979 in taxes last year, an estimated revale would, you know, increase by 24%, would go up to $434,000, and would result in an increase of $368 per year, $31 a month. And a home at $450,000, which paid $12,830 last year, is, you know, estimated to go up to a value of $558 and $13,303 in taxes. So again, this is just an average, and until the budget is voted on, then this mill rate is still not fixed until the budget hopefully passes through the referendum. But this can give you a good sort of ballpark figure of, you know, what might happen to my taxes. So all in all, you know, we think we had a really good budget process. We had a great working relationship with everybody on the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed, the Board of Selectmen's Office. I thank all of our department heads for doing a wonderful job at all of their presentations. And overall, I have to say, everybody was completely cognizant of the strain that everybody is under with inflation, and very, very concerned with trying to mitigate the impact of any tax increase that might be passed on. And that is really why this board felt that utilizing 1.3 million of the undesignated fund balance was an appropriate thing to use, especially if you look at it, we collected a lot of back taxes. You know, during COVID, you know, a lot of people weren't paying, and things, you know, that affected all of us as taxpayers last year because we had to absorb that. Now, all of that, a lot of those back taxes, back liens, all of that came in this year. So it really seemed only fair that we would be passing that on to our residents in the form of utilization of that 1.3 million out of the undesignated fund balance, while at the same time maintaining that 15% target, which is our budgetary goal. So I don't know whether we take questions or wait to be answered. So at the end of all the presentations, if people have questions, obviously, we'll be here.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mr. First Selectman, would you like to make some remarks?
Thank you, Jean. Just to really briefly cover some of the positions that are in the town's budget that are having an impact on the budget for next year. The first one is two dispatchers, two full-time dispatchers. Right now, on our midnight shift, we only have one dispatcher working. Back in the years when it was just fire dispatch, that was challenging enough. Now that dispatcher has to do police as well as fire. If at 2:00 in the morning, a dispatcher now is talking to someone on the phone, helping them through CPR on a loved one or something like that, and the police have an emergency, you don't have the resource there. So for, you know, everyone's safety, as well as those first responders, the need to have two people working at all times is, everyone is deemed extremely essential. So that's why those two positions are in there. IT director. We're seeing all the concerns with cybersecurity and that area and so forth. And we have a brand-new communications service out at the Public Safety Building. We felt now is the time to bring in an expert who could oversee IT in the town. We'll still have STAR computers as an asset, as well as, you know, a coordinator as well to help do the daily, day-to-day stuff with emails and so forth like that, troubleshooting. But we need someone who's dedicated and has a good background. So that's why that position is in there. Moving forward with police, 1.5 positions. This doesn't mean one person's going to work part-time. It means we'll have one person start if the budget passes in July, and another person will start in January. What that'll do, right now, we're the 12th lowest in the state as far as the number of police officers per residence on a daily basis, you know, per 1,000. What this will do is it'll allow an additional 520 shifts a year. So the most common call we get, I get, the police department gets, speeding, motor vehicle. This will be an additional 520 shifts. You'll have a lot, there'll be shifts where instead of having the three people working, you'll have four. So you'll be able to dedicate someone to that. And plus, other areas as well. This will help reduce overtime a little bit because you'll have the resources there. Someone on the shift, we have four people working, one takes off, you don't have to call anybody in overtime. The next one is human resources assistant. We have found out with establishing the human resources coordinator position, our department head this year, so many things were not getting done. Statutorily, we didn't have files separated. Someone's personnel files were in with their medical records. Or we'd find a box of just loose papers in there that contain discipline history of someone. We need to address that and have it done. And seeing what has to be done on a day-to-day basis as far as forms, when someone gets hurt, when someone's going to retire, with family medical leave act-type stuff, you need that resource in there. And it also says floater because right now, one of the things I've noticed at town hall over the last five months, we don't have the personnel there. If my admin assistant is not there for the day, and I'm not there for the day because I'm out at a meeting, our door is shut and locked to the First Selectmen's Office. That shouldn't be the case. This will allow us to address that in the event someone has to take a day off or something. Moving on to the part-time building official, we're still seeing a huge increase in requests for buildings, applications, and permit applications. This will allow us to bring in the necessary resources, not only on the admin side, but on the technical side to go out into the field to keep up with it. Because right now, it's getting difficult. It's taking longer for process, to process the claims and the permit request. So this will help alleviate that. Niantic Fire Department, 0.5 positions. Again, this is someone that'll be hired halfway through the year. It'll be one person, which will augment the nine full-timers we have right now. Our calls for service, especially in fire service and emergency medical requests, are skyrocketing. And a lot of it has to do with HEPA, our retirement communities, Twin Havens, Crescent Point. So we want to make sure we have the resources. There's frequently times when all three ambulances are out. So we need the resources there. Finance Department here again. We see more increases in requirements, and we're trying to modernize. Right now, we're still back in the 1950s. If you take a day off, you have to submit a form in triplicate, three carbon copies. I don't know many places that still do that. We're in the process now of augmenting to, everything can be computerized. So this will save time and allow some other items to be done. Tax Department, the same thing. This seven and a half hours gives them a little bit more help during the tax season, which is January and July, but then gives us a little bit more time if that resource is needed in another office. Right now, we have, we used to have two full, the town clerk, a full-time assistant, and a part-timer. Now it's just the town clerk and an assistant. If one of them's out and the other one has to leave for some reason, we have to lock the door to the town clerk's office. We want to alleviate that. We don't want to have to do that. So that's pretty much all of the increases, and it shows the amount there. One thing, too, is we've had to put a lot of money in our salary contingency. It's not on the slide this year because right now, we're negotiating with all four unions for next year. Couple of them have agreed to roll their contracts for a year, but the other two, we're going to have to negotiate. The current salary increases for this, or for fiscal year '21, '22, were 2.25%. With inflation as it is now, that's not going to continue. So we had to build some bit of a contingency into the salary line item going ahead. I'll go through the next couple of slides. What we have to do is do, and I'll cover the next year's capital plan in just a minute. But bonding agencies, as Denise said, we want to try and upgrade things a little bit with our bondings. They like to see a 10-year plan. The only thing that we'll be voting on tonight is the first column, '22, '23, and I'll cover that in a little bit more detail coming up. Everything else is just placeholders for what we anticipate moving ahead. So as you can see in one line, engineering, it shows 4,524, 25. That could slide a year, move up a year. That's just a placeholder. We're identifying needs in the future. And same thing on this page, the Fire Department. If you can see way out on the 217, Niantic Fire Department, the ladder truck, you see way down in 2029, 2030, there's 1.5 million. That will probably change by then. But that just makes us aware that we're going to have to start looking at doing that. It's just to keep us aware of what is coming ahead. This is what we're going to be talking about for next year. The first one up there is revale. And we put some money aside every year so when we get hit with that fifth year and have to spend a couple hundred thousand, we have the money sitting aside. After some of the people got their revales, they probably asked, just certainly not do that anymore. But we have to. There is no money next year for building, although we are looking at digitizing records, but that's a year or two down the road. Moving on, engineering and continuing nonrecurring. That's money that's set aside on a regular basis that address, that we can have access to, to address the needs there. And you can see it's CAD software and survey equipment. And if it says GF, which is beneath that where it says information technology, that's general fund, $10,000 out of the general fund. That's in our budget request, and that's in the budget. And here again, something like that. Even though you, if it gets approved tonight, it still has to come back through an appropriation through the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Town Meeting later on if we decide to move it forward. Townwide replacement servers. Here again, continuing nonrecurring because we keep doing this on a continual basis. You need to keep upgrading your computer stuff. Moving down, LOSEP. That's state money given to us. So here again, it'll be approved, but that does not figure into the budget. And you can see townwide garage door repairs, townwide parking lot repairs, paint outside of the East Lime Community Center, public safety, building repairs and improvements, and townwide carpet replacement. These are all things, the money is given to us by the state, but we still have to come out and get it reapproved through here. HVAC pump replacement townwide. This is where we put money aside every year so that when something goes wrong, we don't have to come back to the town and use a large amount of money or consider bonding it. The money builds up over time so that you have a contingency to use if that pops up. Same thing with the various townwide roof replacement beneath that. You want to have the resources available when the need arises. Moving down, the next thing is AED defibrillators. Again, we try to buy one a year. There's none right now identified for next year, but that might change. And here again, there used to be grants for this, but now we want to have a fund. If the grant doesn't come, we want to be sure we can replace the defibrillator because that's something that, if it's needed, you don't want to say, well, we couldn't afford it this year. Next one is emergency management planning resource, and that, American Rescue Plan. It's in here even though that's already been approved for disbursement at a town meeting and so forth like that. But there's $12,800 for that. The East Lime Waterford Boat Engine, we, again, continuing nonrecurring. We're putting money aside to make sure when we need the engine, it's there. I think this is the last year we're going to have to do this for a while because we've got a good amount of money in there. If anybody has a boat, you know you can't find the engines anyway, but we're still trying to have the money set aside for it. State radio communications. The police department wants to upgrade to the state radio system. It's $466,000. Again, American Rescue Plan money. This will help our first responders be able to communicate outside just a local town. This is a great resource to have moving forward. And beneath that, there's a police K-9 for the years down. Looks like next year, we're looking at bringing out another K-9. That will be an additional expense, but that'll be in years to come, next year. The acquisition plan, $147,000. The police department purchases their vehicles with the money they get for working the highway road construction jobs. Everything, there's a surcharge on the cost for the police officers, so everything is covered with a contingency. And they're able to purchase their vehicles through the contingency program or through that thing. So it's right there, but it does not cost a taxpayer anything. Moving on here, you'll see Niantic Fire Department. They have nothing until you get down to thermal imaging camera, assorted fire hose replacement, SCUBA, 45-millon cylinders, and turnout gear. And then, if you'll notice, Flanders, the same thing. Some SCUBA, a little bit more, 6,600, four full-set structural firefighting PPEs, and then assorted fire hose replacement. The fire hoses are yearly basis, but the fire departments have worked together to try and make sure that they stagger the need for replacing everybody's equipment all at once. They try and make one for one year, one the next. So they are working together on that. But here again, this is frontline firefighters, and much of that is the general fund, and nothing right now in the extended years for bonding. Moving on, public works. Replace and upgrade town hall air handler. We have a lot of, we need dehumidifying equipment in town hall. It's an old HVAC system. This is American Rescue Plan money that's already been approved. But here again, it's right there. Upgrade to the Field Services Building. That's out on Colton Road or in the industrial park up there. The building needs to have the air handlers replaced. There are vehicles in there that are running on a regular basis, so you'll definitely want the air handlers in good shape, and they are in need of replacement. We have American Rescue Plan. New trash truck, $340,000. Again, there's some good news on this. We were hoping to get one for about $315,000, right, Joe? It worked out even better than that. That one was sold before we could approve the money at the town meeting. But the day after we approved this, Mr. Burgal was able to locate one at $293,000 that we already have. So that money goes back into the pot for American Rescue Plan money and figure out how to use that at a later time. But just a lot of good, hard work in identifying an asset because right now, you're waiting usually 10 or 11 months for a garbage truck, police cars, dump trucks, and so forth. And again, LOSEP money, then vehicle equipment per plan. Again, the acquisition plan. We purchased vehicles, dump trucks, pickup trucks, other apparatus and that over the year, and that's a other apparatus and that, uh, over the year, and that's in an acquisition plan. We don't pay for it all upfront. We pay for it over a five-year period, and that's the combined cost of the vehicles that are currently on the acquisition plan. It lets us keep our fleet current without having to pay the total value or bond out for the total value, uh, right out every year. Lift jacks for the highway maintenance garage. Again, they're older, they need to be worked on. You're having some very heavy vehicles. We have people working on them. Again, this is LoSiP money, money comes through the state, but again, has to be reapproved, approved. What we do bond for every year is to improve our roads, and we're doing $850,000 for that. Uh, it's pretty much every year we do that, and that usually encompasses a road, a couple roads that may have to be totally reclaimed from start to finish, others chipped, sealed and so forth like that. And the thing is, by doing this, we're able to keep on top of it, and as time goes on, lower the cost, because it's much easier to keep, maintain a road than it is to rebuild it. Rebuild plant dam, but it says $20,000 LoSiP. That's just for study and so forth. To actually replace that dam, which will be in a couple of years, will be a whole lot more money, and that'll be bonding. But this is just to identify what the costs are going to be moving forward. Vehicle replacement acquisition, uh, moving down, feasibility study for the East Line Community Center, Public Library, 38,000. The building is about 32, 33 years old. It needs a new roof, space constrained, so we want to have someone come in and say, what can we do to enhance that building, to make it more of an asset for the town, properly apply some more offices in there, add on to it. Before we do that, or before we move forward in that, we want to use some funds to find out what can we feasibly do for that, because it'd be much easier to expand that than it would be to build a whole new facility somewhere else. Again, moving down here, Mason South Dump Truck, you can see, uh, what it's replacing, uh, and you're seeing, uh, what it's, uh, $80,000, but that's part of the acquisition plan. Then moving down to the playscape improvements at McCooks and Parrot's Park, $150,000. Again, American Rescue Plan money. The next one, it's not 75,000 for pet ball stations, so that's what everybody saw when we did this the first time. It's for replacing all water fountains in parks with, uh, bottle fillers and pet ball stations. So that's an added asset to it. So that's all there. Restroom enhancements, replacements in parks. At our next Board of Select meeting, Mr. Putnam is going to give us a presentation on what he looks at purchasing. At $75,000 apiece, he's going to look to buy two or three compost bathrooms. You would have no idea, it's not a normal bathroom, but it's not an outhouse. It looks totally new, but it's compost. And they're expensive, but it would help us be able to do this without having to, you know, cut into the water system down there or totally rebuild our current bathrooms. So this is something that we're looking forward to moving forward with. Open space at Darrell Pond, we have, you know, a lot of very up there. We have 200 acres under a conservation easement, but 100 acres that we're looking at doing some light recreation in. This will allow us to bring in somebody that's already committed with Parks and Rec. They'll work together then and identify what is the best use to that facility. And then moving on to the Board of Education. Jeff, did you want to talk to that, or do you want me to cover?
Go ahead.
Okay. Again, for bonding, uh, comedian, uh, there's a schedule, uh, that I don't know if that I have, Jeff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, okay.
So, so again, 1 million per the schedule for, uh, bonding for the, uh, the schedule, and then the acquisition of maintenance, they're purchasing a vehicle, and that's going to go under the acquisition plan, about 60,000, and then a technology, uh, plan as well. That's something we funded on a regular basis, and that's on an acquisition plan where it keeps going year after year. So that's all I have right now. Jeff, if you want to add to that, or take question to that anyway. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Mr. Newton?
Just have, uh, three slides that I just want to review quickly, and while, uh, Mr. Places, there we go. Let me start off too by thanking, uh, the Board of Education, and on behalf of the Board of Education, many thanks again to the Board of Selectmen, as also the Board of Finance, as well as, this is all said, I think it was a very collaborative approach, um, as we really work hard to, uh, to instill, and, uh, a very thorough approach too. Uh, as a taxpayer and owner of property in this town, um, I've always been impressed with the thoroughness of the Board of Finance and the work that goes into that. Let me first, uh, just do a bit on a needs statement. Uh, we really focused next year's budget around the needs of our district. With over 27, or right around 2,700 students, over 600 employees, almost 700,000 square feet of building space, uh, we wrapped, uh, our budget around, uh, specific, for, for specific needs in particular. One being, uh, student, uh, behavioral and emotional concerns and issues. We've seen a, uh, uptick this year specifically, um, contribute mainly due to COVID and the disruption that last year brought forth, and disruption that occurred this year. Um, we've really been dealing with a lot of major, uh, behavioral issues, and we've worked to put supports in place this year. We need to continue those for next year. Ongoing achievement gaps, um, as, you know, the disruption last year with the hybrid model of instruction, we have found, uh, through, uh, work and intervention and support this year, that we do have achievement gaps. We've identified those pockets of students and populations, uh, and we've put interventions and supports in place, and want to continue and make sure that those supports are ongoing as we move through the next school year. Also needed student support services, that kind of wraps in and ties into our special education support services. Our special education numbers are on the rise across the state. Uh, the state prevalence rate is up around 16%. Uh, we're sitting right around 17, just a little bit higher, 17%. Uh, so, you know, it's almost five, you know, 485 students roughly that are receiving student support services or identified under special education. Uh, we need to continue to make sure we're providing the best supports possible for those students. And, uh, the fourth, uh, bullet there, just ensuring that we continue to make sure that we have appropriate class sizes, which is also going to help with the intervention, uh, especially at those primary grades, those K to two grades. Um, so we're focused on making sure that those, uh, class sizes remain appropriate rolling into next year. Again, it's, it's, uh, want to make sure it's a continued collaborative effort, you know, between the Board of Ed, um, Town Administration, um, our First Select Minister, Siri, uh, and, uh, as we all work together to provide, uh, the best academic and social learning environment for our students. It's, uh, no surprise, um, probably to anyone in this room, that, uh, as a Board of Education and a opera, a district, uh, operating budget, uh, relies heavily on fixed costs. And the biggest two are salaries as well as health insurance. Fixed costs make up roughly about 97% of our entire budget. Um, the salaries as well as health insurance, uh, make up almost 80% roughly of that 97%. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, with over 600 employees, contracts, unions, uh, we have averaged around a 2.5% increase, uh, for, through those contracts, and we typically have three-year agreements with our unions. Tuition, you'll see tuition and transportation, um, tuition, uh, special education tuition dollars, as well as, you know, our busing and busing transportation. Utilities, uh, up 12.36%. That includes leases, insurance, plant maintenance, contracted services. As we all know, um, you know, Mrs. Hall mentioned inflation, uh, our utilities are up, looking at a 300, almost a $300,000 increase going into next year for utilities. Um, so that, uh, is something that we're working through. All of our buildings, um, outside of Niantic Center run off of natural gas, Niantic Center still runs off of oil. Uh, so, uh, I think, uh, we all know where the prices of oil and, and gas are as well. And that little sliver supplies textbook software equipment, you know, we've continued to kind of reduce that, uh, each, each year, but trying to make sure that, uh, we have the, the best tools, um, as well as technology. Uh, you know, we're a one-to-one device district now, which has been in place, and we're really utilizing those, uh, materials and, uh, those one-to-one devices with our students on a much more thorough, uh, basis, and that will continue. So we are looking at a 3.64% increase over the, uh, current fiscal year. It was a 500, uh, $500,000 reduction, uh, that we received, um, we were at, we were at 4.59. And we're currently working through some higher health insurance costs that were, uh, a bit unexpected. So we're in the process of working through those. And lastly, I'll just mention our per pupil expenditures for East Lime. Uh, we sit currently at, uh, $19,761, uh, in a cost per pupil. If you notice, the districts above us, um, they, they pay more, but academically and test-wise, test scores, uh, we do better than most all of those districts. So we're getting, uh, I think the best bang for our buck with, um, what we're spending for dollars, uh, and the education that we're providing to our, our students. So with that, that, that's it. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Would anyone else like to be heard on the budget discussion? Seeing no hands, then we'll close the discussion on the budget, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number two on the call to adopt a five-year capital plan. Do I hear a resolution? Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Um, is there any discussion on it? Mr. First, you want to go over it again, or you, you all set? Okay, we've all heard Mr. First Selectman's, uh, explanation. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Schultz, come on up to the microphone here, please.
Mike Schultz, Lovers Lane, East Lime. I'm assuming this is the time for, uh, the public discussions, nothing to do with, I mean, you've already given your presentations, and this is our opportunity to give a, uh, about things through you.
That's correct, Mr. Schultz. Either the budget or the five-year plan.
Okay, thank you. Well, we, first, I want to thank the, uh, Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, uh, all you folks that have been involved, um, in developing the budget. I know it's, it takes an awful lot of time, and, uh, little compensation if, in some cases, zero compensation, so I thank you. I, I too agree the budget went, uh, fairly well. Uh, but, but for me, we've, we've, we've discussed this budget now for a couple of months, and we've brought it through public discussions before, for the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, everybody's had an opportunity to, uh, you know, voice their opinions if they chose to. And, uh, it seems like these town meetings that we're having here now, although we gave a, another presentation, uh, a limited presentation by, uh, the Board of Education and the Board of Finance, it, but it's, it, it's almost like we're getting into a redundancy. And I know it's required by the charter, and hopefully we get a revision in, at that at some, some point too. But it seems, seems to me that this meeting should go, go beyond that, and we should be, uh, discussing, uh, beyond the budget, and it should address, uh, other things, and this is the opportunity for the public to come out and, and, uh, you know, say something. I know there's other people in this audience that obviously have some problems, or concerns with what's going on in town, but we, to me, this is, this is our opportunity. We used to fill the house, but now it's going to referendum, we don't do that anymore. Uh, but of course, we used to approve the budget at that point too. But I'd like to hear from the superintendent, uh, what problems he and his staff are facing and suggestions for help, such as, uh, why we have to employ social workers and psychologists, uh, in, in some detail. Your presentation tonight did in fact, uh, address some of those, those issues, because there's got to be a lot more to it than that, because we're spending an awful lot of money, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring in extra help and, and people, and I'm not so sure that, uh, I want to know, you know, where, where do the parents come into this? Now, Monday morning, Mr. Newton comes in, and he's probably got a desk full of problems and kids, uh, situations to handle. That's not what school's about. School's about education. It's not about taking care of, we shouldn't have to be the ones to take care of the kids' problems. We have insurance, we, that should be done in many respects through outside sources, not within the school, in my opinion, because that just gets thrown right back at the taxpayer. I'd like to hear, uh, as well, um, our First Selectman on some of the issues he's dealing with, and some pub, and have some public discussions about, about that. I mean, we, we're seeing the budget, but that's, that's, there's got to be a lot more issues out there than, than that. And, uh, and again, the public, to bring it, bring it forth, I'd like to, we, we should all hear about it, but there's, there's, there's no other good way to do that. So this is our opportunity. And so as I said, I'd, I'd like to hear from the public on some of the difficulties, uh, they are encountering and living in Niantic and East Lime. Everybody's got the problems with the cost of oil and heat and revaluations. We're all, we're all dealing with that. There's, there's got to be some ways that we can, we can cut back on these, and we, and we need to bring some of those ideas forward. I know we're spending over a million dollars on extracurricular activities, that we, we know we got people that are complaining about Niantic Center School having an over an abundance of kids there relative to some of the other schools. Well, we didn't spend gosh darn much money on the extracurricular. Maybe we could have, uh, more teacher to student ratio, ratio at Niantic Center Schools as an example. So there, there just, there's got to be more things that, that the town can do, and the public to get involved in. And if you don't mind, if you had to tell a quick little story, my, my, uh, daughter in Florida put a deposit down on a house to have new construction. Been waiting now for 16 months. It's done. It's a townhouse. Contractor failed to put the road in, because there's a 18-month contract that was signed that said that if they aren't in by 18 months, the purchaser can, but can back out of the deal. But so can the contractor. Price of homes have increased down there by 40 to 50%. So now, instead of 500,000, if she was going to buy this, it's going to be 750,000. So that's the tricks that people are pulling down south, and we've probably got, the same kind of thing could happen up here, so that's a problem. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Would anyone else like to be heard?
John DeSantis, 7 Cory Lane, can you hear me?
Yes, John.
On the improvements for the road, the $850,000, I'd like to know if they're going to possibly consider redoing Roxbury Road. Every day I'm on that road, people are coming on the wrong side of the road to avoid the bumps. It's been like that for four years. It's a safety issue. They come around the blind curves, if you know what, you know where Roxbury Road is, right?
Yes.
You know how bad those blind curves are? Well, in the morning, they're coming on the wrong side of the road. I wrote a letter and I gave it to the First Selectman, because they're coming on the wrong side of the road to avoid the big bumps that are doing deterioration to your front end of your vehicles. That's a safety issue. Now, on this reevaluation, mine went up $37,000. Is there a certain percentage they're using on this to go up?
Do you want someone to answer that question?
I can't hear you.
Do you want someone to answer that question for you?
Yeah.
Would anyone like to answer the question? Mr. First Selectman?
Mr. DeSantis, they, you got a revale information in the mail, and they would have-
Right.
If you had contacted Vision, they would have appraisal, they would have told you how they came up with that calculation, at which point, if you didn't agree, you could have appointed, uh, appealed it to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Well, I understand that.
So that's how that was done. We hire a, a vision appra, uh, and a service to come in and do the, uh, revaluation, and, and they're the ones that come up with the numbers, not the town.
Let me ask you this question. Suppose the economy takes a dive and the evaluate, the, the appraised value going down as opposed to what it's going up right now. Next year, would it be a difference?
No, I, the best answer for that is to call the assessor's office. I do not want to answer for that. Every five years, we do a full revale, but the tax assessor would be the best one to give you a, a good answer on that. I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Is that an approximate to 23.84 mils?
Yes, it is, but intent, it won't be till after. Yes, it is, but intend, it won't be till after, as she mentioned, as Ms. Hall.
The next meeting is the May 19th?
No, there'll be, after the budget is adopted, if it is adopted on the 19th, then the Board of Finance officially sets the mil right after that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Would anyone else like to be heard?
My name is Mary Rose Conklin, 97 West Main Street, and I have a question about that undesignated fund balance. And if my understanding is correct, that we're using it to offset the tax increase for this year? Is that correct?
Ms. Hall, you want to answer?
So basically, that undesignated fund balance is, like I said, sort of the savings account, that year after year, you know, every year we create a budget, which is just like our best estimate, and if things don't come in exactly, maybe we get more in revenues, then we look and say, okay, that we can add to our savings. And then, you know, the next year, maybe it's a little bit below, and we can't add anything to our savings. So this year, because we had a lot of real estate transactions took place, so those conveyance fees came in, you know, we had a couple of significant properties, so we were able to take in much more in revenues than we expected. Now, instead of just putting it all into that undesignated fund balance and increasing it to, you know, 16 or 17% of the total budget, we said, let's not add all of that into our savings account, and instead use it for, to offset what would have been a greater tax increase by using it in this upcoming budget.
So is that a rare event that you're able to do this?
Well, we had, you know, a couple of big-ticket items that we weren't expecting with the, those, sale of those properties, Gateway, so that wasn't something that we had anticipated in this budget this year. And also, like I said, there was quite a bit of back taxes from previous years that came in this year, as, you know, people started to recover and get back to work from COVID and made a point to pay their back taxes.
So I'm kind of anticipating into next year, we're going to start off having to make up this tax money before you even add on the new budget increase.
Well, you know, what we were very cognizant of that, that we had sort of those one-time items that came in. Now, again, we could have just said, great, we've got these one-time items, and just added it to our savings account, but instead.
I realize what you did.
Yeah.
I'm just saying is, there may be a price to pay next year, where we have to come up with this money, and then whatever the increase for next year is going to be.
Well, well, next year, we'll have to see how this budget goes forward, whether, you know, we try to be conservative, and Anna Johnson does a wonderful job, but a budget is just, it's an estimate, is where we think things are going to be. So it may be by this time next year, we would also be able to add to the fund budget, the fund balance. But, you know, it will be a new budget year, and if our revenues, if we don't expect those revenues to be there, then we're going to have to look at where our expenses are.
Well, I thought it was a good thing to do because of the financial situation and the big increase in prices. I was just curious if, better save my pennies for next year.
Well, we all, we all want to save, that's for sure, and it's definitely a difficult environment for everybody with this inflation, and that's what we're going to have to take into account next year when we look at expenses and, you know, what we think we can afford to invest in. But the town, you know, we have an infrastructure that you need to keep investing in, you know, it's like with your own house, you need to make sure you've got a roof that, you know, isn't leaking, because otherwise it's going to be a bigger problem in the future. You know, we're certainly concerned about where interest rates are going, because that's going to affect where the town can borrow money for those long-term projects, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conklin. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then we will move the question. All in favor of approving the five-year plan, capital plan, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying nay. Capital plan passes. There being no other items on the agenda, then we will adjourn this meeting to May 19th, between the hours of 8:00 and 8:00 at the community center to vote on the referendum. Okay, so we are, absentee ballots are available. In person at the town clerk's office. Okay, so we are adjourned to referendum.